I know it, but if I'm not in the chair...
Also, if you don't reconstitute them, then technically you could have a committee that just goes on in perpetuity.
Exactly.
And then you no longer need to...
Margaret, how do I advance? Because it's not on my...
Just do it on your click...
Like arrow?
I think so.
Okay.
What do you do? There's like stuff that you do, right?
Huh!
Yeah.
Yeah.
A whole lot of stuff is...
I don't think you're forbidden from doing it.
They go away to school, so...
Why do you call a robbery school? We have to follow some...
Something? Yeah, exactly. You need, you need structure.
So, I do feel like...
I mean, the difference between how the board meetings go...
Yeah, they are somewhat effective, but then...
Whenever I'm in a board meeting that's not strictly following a round of his order, you get so in the meat, so...
Yeah.
And no one knows where you are.
Quiet! Next thing!
I don't...
I like the boycotts.
Did we...
What is it on?
You have to step aside.
Yeah.
I'm a minute behind, so I'm hard and cranky, don't test me. Okay, we'll call the meeting, the order. Ten oh two. First order of business. For those of you that will, the rest of you can sit if you don't want to, but will stand and say the button. My party allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna run down through my list of rules. You wanna pay attention to this. The very first rule, for any of you folks that might be here first time at first meeting, listen closely. Cell phones. If you have your cellphone with you, either turn it off or turn it to vibrate. If I hear your phone go off at this meeting, I will single you out as a person that could not follow a simple instruction. And everybody else here will get to see who you are. Make sure they're off or on vibrate. Any non-voters? I would please not have you vote during our vote process. If I think you're a non-voter, I will challenge you and make you stand against the wall. One speaker has the floor to a time. That means, and I know nobody believes this, that I can't hear the little whispering and chattering clear over in that back corner, but I can, I can hear everything. I get super ears. The only thing I was blessed with was super ears. I won't stop the meeting and call you out if you're chattering amongst yourselves. One person has the floor to a time. That person, when they are recognized to have the floor, shall stand up and give their name so Lucia, who's taken the minutes of the meeting, can get it down in the minutes as to who is speaking. A voter, you will, if you're here discussing a topic, you will not be recognized a second time until everybody has got to speak on the subject the first time. So if you've already spoke and there's a gadrillion hands in the air, put yours down. I'm not calling on you. If there's no objection, I would allow non-voters to speak to the bottom, which is obviously when the head of school come up or you represent a director or whatever. Doesn't appear to be any objection. The other thing, don't block the doors. Everybody that's standing needs to find a seat. If there's not enough, I would ask one of the JPs, we do have an extra 10 chairs in this side room that we can set out. Nobody is gonna be in front of that door. I'm gonna stop the meeting and I'm gonna get Eric to start escorting people right out of here.
We've got two or three here, two or three in the front row, two or three over there. Come, come to church light and gotta send the front row.
That's right. You gotta be right up here where I can see them.
There's plenty of seats up here.
With a hairy alcohol on you. Very good. Love it. Sit on the floor or wherever. I'm hoping not to be here very long. There's a reminder from the town clerk, and she makes me say this every year, and for you those of you that don't know, she is my ex-wife, so if I don't say that, I'm gonna be in a world of crap. Homestead has to be filed by April 15th. Don't forget. A lot, you know, a lot of people do, cause they're self in trouble. And it's state law, register your dogs by April 1st. Out of town law, it's a state law. Last thing before we get going, I would ask that everybody here, you treat each other with kindness, respect, and be courteous. I, I don't wanna hear the mudslinging crap hole that we hear on a national level. We're a small town in Windhalle. We're here to do the annual business of the Windhalle School District and the Town of Windhalle. And with that, we are gonna move into the school district portion.
Scott, could you do a little polls?
Oh, yeah.
I forget that every year.
Uh, the polls are open in the back of the room for your Australian ballot voting. Okay. So, Article one. To elect one school director for a three-year term, re-voted by Australian ballot, which is in the back of the room. Article two, to elect the moderator for the ensuing year by voted by Australian ballot, which is in the back of the room. And I'm the moderator, so if at any time you feel like you don't wanna listen to me next year, please, by all means, put your name on the paper back there. Okay, Article three. Sheldon voters authorize the school board to borrow money by issuance of notes not in excess of anticipated revenue for the fiscal year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. So the way this works, I need a motion to move the question to the floor. Uh, motion by Kim Waller, seconded by Julie Isaacs. Discussion. Is there any discussion on this article? No discussion at all, because I'm gonna, if I don't see any hands or anything, I'm gonna move pretty quickly. Because again, for you new timers, noon is lunchtime. The further I go past lunchtime, crankier I get. So to spare you, I'm gonna try to get us through in a decent timely manner. It's not for me, it's for you. Okay, so, all in favor? Sheldon voters authorize the school board to borrow money by issuance of notes not in excess of anticipated revenue for the fiscal year July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026. All in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Okay, Article four. Sheldon voters approve tuition payment of the announced tuition rate of the Mountain School at Windhalle in the amount of $19,550 for the 2025-2026 school year for resident pupils who attend the Mountain School at Windhalle. Do I have a motion to move the question to the floor? Sheldon. Laura E. Waller, seconded, Kristi.
Boswell.
Boswell.
Just Boswell. Just go...
Uh, discussion? Sheldon voters approve the tuition payment of the announced tuition rate at the Mountain School at the Windhalle in the amount of $19,550 for the 2025-2026 school year for resident pupils who attend the Mountain School at Windhalle. Any questions? Any comments? Any concerns?
So, Scott, we're gonna do our...
You oughta do your thing now?
Yeah.
Fire away when you're...
Well, and are we gonna do the heads of school?
I don't know, are we? How many are here? Yeah.
Two.
Yeah, why don't we do that? As I'm in such a rush, I'm just...
Three.
So why don't you come on over? You know, limit yourself to 30 seconds or so.
We should, we should change the paradigm. We should pass the budget first, and then talk about...
Are we just gonna like close this? We don't need to be here.
Well, you know what the problem is? It's always...
I don't try, so you're gonna have to be super quiet.
The extra tuition is always before the general budget. That should always be before the general budget, and then you have the discussion. I don't know why not, but it's always that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm gonna behave myself and refrain from making jokes about Mark not having equal rights. Be kind and...
Thanks, and kind of have an accepted discussion.
Thank you all. I, I'm, my name's Colin Igoe. I'm the head of school at Long Trail School over in Dorset. And, and here to just say thank you briefly for your continued support of our school. And then, you know, share a little bit, as we all know, and I'm sure as will be discussed today and in the coming months, that there are real challenges facing our state regarding education statewide. And I think, I know, here in our area of southern Vermont, we have a really fantastic system that educates kids very well. And I'm particularly proud of, of the experience that our students at Long Trail had in grades six through 12. I see some, some parents in the room here today. And so, while this isn't just about Long Trail, I did wanna just address and say clearly that as we navigate some uncertainty ahead, that my goal and our goal as a community is to ensure that we do everything in our power to maintain as much access as possible to Long Trail School, to school choice, and to ensuring that we educate all of our kids currently and future kids, continue to provide them with a powerful transformative educational experience. There's probably nothing more important to a functioning community, and certainly nothing that we care more about by than our children and our, our economy. And those two things are really intertwined as we see what's at play at the state level. So as a school, we're really engaged and committed and encourage all of you to do the same as things continue to unfold. So just briefly, because I'll hand over my colleagues here, but Long Trail School, this year, we have 260 students in grades six through 12. That's the highest enrollment the school has ever experienced. We graduated 39 students in May. We're going off, 37 of them are going off to four-year colleges. An amazing and diverse set of schools, two of them, one of them is planning to join the military and another into the workforce. And that's kind of the outcome that we're really proud of and work hard along with families and students. But all the special sauce are the things that happened before that, from sixth grade all the way through 12th grade. And our ambition statement is to create lifelong learners who fulfill their individual potential in an engaging and supportive community. I think that is the secret sauce, that we have really high expectations for students, but we are also incredibly compassionate place. So students get to engage in an IB curriculum, International Baccalaureate, which is an incredibly powerful holistic approach to learning. We have robust athletics, including tonight at 6 o'clock, our number two ranked girls basketball team will host their home playoff game, come down to our beautiful fieldhouse and watch the game. Next week, we're sending 14 students over to Germany as part of our exchange with, with a German school in Kunislaue, Germany. We have a robust and really impressive arts program. If you haven't seen a show, if you haven't come to campus, I really encourage you to come visit. And I'll end with that, that, you know, Long Trail's a really special place, and I want all of you to know that there's a warm and genuine invitation to come visit, come see what's happening in the classrooms, come to a game, come to a performance, because we're, we're of this community and for this community and in this community, and really genuinely want as many people to come and see the special sauce that happens at Long Trail School. Thank you all very much for your support, and I encourage you to support the budget that the school district has so thoughtfully put together. And thank you all for your tireless and, and probably often thankless work to make sure that there's, there's great education for our kids. Thank you.
Sorry, we're gonna, we're gonna jump around even first. Um, your representative is here to speak to us, Chris Morrow, and he has to get to all those other towns, so I'm actually gonna bring him up for him to have his words to say. I'm sure that he got anything good to say, or...
Hopefully just take some questions.
This is a tough crowd right here.
Hello, uh, for those of you that don't know me, I live over in Weston. There, I grew up in Manchester, lived in Weston for 25 years or so, raised my kids here. They went to Flutbrook and Burn Burton and Long Trail, actually. One of my daughters went there for a few years. And mostly worked down in Manchester in the family business, which was the North Shire Bookstore. Now I have a little time to go up to Montpelier, so I've had quite a learning curve over the last couple of months. There's a lot going on up there. If you want a detailed report of what's going on, committee by committee, there's one on my website, which is just Morrow, the number four, bt.com. Also on there is a link to a survey. The biggest thing going on up in Montpelier is education reform, as you probably expect. So there's a link to a survey there. This is really your last chance to, to weigh in as citizens before some bills come, get crafted in the next few weeks about our education reform package coming out of the House. There's a different one that will come out of the Senate. The governor, of course, has presented his plan, which we're working from. So there's a lot going on. So if you have opinions about our school reform, education reform efforts, now is the time, please, please do weigh in. I put a little form in the back also with a QR code on it, so you can just, a little link to it there if you'd like. But I really encourage you to weigh in right, right now, if you'd like to, particularly around the issue of, of choice. A lot of people in Montpelier don't understand how our descending town choice system works. They just don't have experience with it. And for some reason, even though it's a very small number of kids statewide and a small dollar amount, there's some very, very vocal, passionate feelings about, about this issue. So we, we need to be, have our voice heard down here where we have, where we have choice and we have a system that works well for our kids who go seamlessly from, from public to private schools. And also on Thursday at 5 o'clock, I'll be at the New American Grill in Londonderry to have any small group Q and A and conversation. So if we don't cover something here that you're interested in, please stop by the grill at 5 o'clock on Thursday. And, and feel free to get in touch with me at all through the, through the course of the legislative season. I'd be happy to answer questions or, or help out with dealing with state agencies in any way. As I said, there's a lot going on. I don't know, do you wanna do a few questions or not? I don't know what your timeframe is.
Sure.
Why don't we take... Anyone have any questions about...
I, I, quick question. Who put the survey out? I mean, I know it...
It's put out by the Speaker of the House.
Okay.
Uh, so a lot of the education reform efforts obviously are happening in the education committees, but because it's such a big lift, the Speaker and her staff are also heavily involved in this. And they would really wanna hear from you all.
And let me just echo that. It's really important. We have a pretty special system set up in this town, so I would echo Chris's comments about filling out the survey, because it is really important that our community's voice is heard.
Yes, sir. Chris, in your opinion, how real is the threat to school choice here?
Oh, it's, it's real. It's absolutely real. Everything is up in the air right now, and, and things could come down on a, on a different, different side of this. There's, it's a lot of uncertainty right now on a lot of things. The federal situation is also throwing a wrench in the works up there on many levels. But yeah, there's, there's nothing set in stone right now, and that's why now is the time to weigh in, because the bills are... The governor did finally come out with some, some language in bill form for us to work from, but that was just last week, so, um, you know, the, the committees have had to do a lot of work on their own. I mean, they were gonna take testimony anyway, but it's all coming together in the next few weeks to months. There'll be back and forth with the Senate. The Senate bill, if you haven't, Senator Baumgartz from Manchester has presented a much more interesting, choice-friendly layout of districts and SUs. And so you can check out a map of that, that's on the Senate Education Committee page. There's a little short narrative about that as well. So I suspect what's really gonna happen is the House is gonna come out with a less friendly for us bill, and the Senate's gonna come out with a more friendly bill, and then we're gonna see how it shakes out at the end of the session. But please do weigh in. Yes, sir.
As someone who has a great deal of experience and understands the channels of communication in the State House, for those that are in support of school choice, do you have any recommendations on whose ear it's actually effective to try to get? And any specific points that you would suggest in situating? Because you said a number of people don't understand the system, and it's not gonna do any good to write a letter and email that just says, "You're doing something terrible." Are there specific points that you would recommend that we lean on in, in order to, you know...
Yeah, well, this, this survey is really a great opportunity, because it goes to the Speaker, who's really thick hold of what's happening in the House. You can also, if you wanna email folks, the, you go, the General Assembly has a really good webpage. And the one good thing that came out of COVID is that every single committee meeting and, and floor meeting is streamed on YouTube and recorded, so you can go in and watch them. You can at your leisure, if you're interested in any particular committee or issue. The agendas are posted weekly. You can see who's testifying. But to your point, you, so you can go to the committee page, go to the education page, and see all the members there and their emails. Feel free to email the education committees in either the House or the Senate with your thoughts, really explaining how well school choice works for our kids. Because at the end of the day, what we're after is a system that works well for our kids and at, at a price we can afford. And so if you focus on the value of choice to our children, I think that's really the key message at this point. Yes, ma'am.
Chris, when will they start taking testimony?
Oh, they've been taking testimony for, for weeks now.
Okay, from regular citizens, not just getting schools, PR and other politicians?
Um, yeah, I would email the, the Chair of the Education Committee if you'd like to testify. I'm sure their schedule is packed. He might, he might, he might just ask you to submit written testimony. I, I am not clear on how that's working right now, but Peter Conlin is the Chair of the House Education Committee, and he would be the person to contact.
So I'd like to add one more thing. 27 years ago, this town created an independent school because of the state changing the structure of school. And it takes all of us to speak up, because they will completely redefine education mistake if they don't hear from us. Most importantly, it's not just that we have to say how wonderful experience our kids are, well educated. The people there have no understanding of historically the system here, that we act as public schools for our families and our communities. We have choice because we have students. They use an equity issue to try to close independent schools and schools who serve all the kids in our communities, not with school. Because up north, it's, they feel it's unfair that their parents are saying, "We should be allowed choice too." And it's an equity issue to shut us down with a handful of kids so that they can prove a point, because they believe they should have an option up north as well. The state should be looking at how they can help other public systems that are bigger, have more opportunities, by the way. It's unfair for us, we don't have transportation, we don't have all kinds of enriching opportunities than you have in a, a public and more populated area. And that's the fight you have to make. It's not how great education is, because you will lose on that, because that's their issue. Our kids are better educated because we have independent schools. Their issue is equity, and you have to drive that home. And you have to also drive home, that communities still need to have a say. And as they consolidate everything, if you look how many voices were lost when DeKonic and Green was consolidated and all these towns went in, the voices were lost from the local community. And it is an economic issue. We have an economic engine. And if you look at the stats, a population of young families and workers moving in who will continue to support and thrive in our communities, not dying small communities, are, they make their decisions about where their kids are in school, where they work, and how close they are to one another. They're not putting five or six-year-olds on buses. By the way, the state says they, as long as they can be on a bus for 45 minutes, if it's more than 45 minutes for an elementary school, oh, then we have to rethink where they go. The details in these bills are outrageous. Forget about choice, just think about kids and education and work. How many people are we gonna continue to attract to work here when their kids are an hour away? And they're not gonna move to the town an hour and a half away that has no work. So this is all intertwined, and voices back, the M60 came in 27 years ago. We were on the steps of the State House. This is not a silent issue. This requires noise and abundance of it, and thoughtful noise and standing up for what was created down here and has been preserved for over 100 years with BBA. They don't understand, they don't understand that our choice is a public choice. So please, everybody get involved quickly, because...
Any other questions? Okay, enjoy town meeting. Thank you.
Okay, back to our regularly scheduled program. Margaret? Would you like to take a...
Scott, could we get more chairs?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, can we grab a JP or two? We got some extra chairs I'd love to get out, because you guys have got to get away from that fire door over there. It's an emergency exit, and I'm gonna get real tired of saying that. Yeah. Okay. If it's not too huge of a distraction, I'm gonna let Margaret go ahead and speak, so we can kinda get to getting on here. If it is too much of a distraction, just say so and we'll be off and watch the floor.
Hi, everybody, I'm Margaret Schlotter. If I don't have a chance to meet you, I am the head of school here at the Mountain School at Windhalle, also a Windhalle resident, so less than a mile down the road. And I'm glad to be here, my second year at this school. Kim just gave us a, she was actually, who just spoke, she was one of the founders of this school, and it was founded over 27 years ago. We, I'm gonna jump, kind of, I had an order to go in, but then Kim, I'm gonna jump, jump in based on what she said. We have been here for about 27 years now. This school is, when it opened, it was open with a charter that all students that are from sending to towns, that today is Windhalle, 55% of our students are from Windhalle, Stratton, and now as well Wyndham. 80% of our students come from towns that have choice, that are not operating districts like Windhalle, that are K through, that start at kindergarten with their choice. Our enrollment this year at the school is up 20% from last year. We did a lot of time when we looked at our budgeting for this next school year, and, and when you go on the, the warning that Scott just, just put out there in front of you, just know that we've built into our budget, over 15% of our operating budget now comes from fundraising that we do completely outside of the offset costs, not only so that our students that attend here from the towns and with town tuition, it is at no additional cost to the families that are from those towns for tuition-wise, which sets us apart from many of those places other than kind of BBA. Around here, as well as we try to make sure that we are being super conservative with how we're spending every cent that we spend here at the school. So our budget only is going up three and a half percent next year. So we're trying to keep it. As, as someone who's also paying taxes in this town, understand that everything we ask that comes out of my wallet as well when I pay my home state taxes. So, but that's, that's a little bit, you're gonna be voting on that. About 20% of our students, we've always had special education here at this school, and today we have about 20% of our students receive, either they're on what's called a 504, where they have additional support, mostly in the classroom, or they're on an individualized education plan, which we have a full-time special educator now this year. Because of an increased need for special education, we have two additional part-time people that come into the... people that come into the school and help support us. So that's a little bit about what we're doing. I want to just highlight a few things that have been going on as well. I am really proud, our sixth graders this year, we've really boosted, we use a Singapore method math, it's called Think Math, but at the sixth grade level, that ends at fifth grade, sixth grade, we've developed our own math curriculum that actually gives our sixth graders a pre-algebra math curriculum that we fully implemented this year for our students. We're into the second year, working on increasing our literacy across all classrooms, whether that's writing, our fifth graders just wrote about an ecological concern that they had, they wrote a book, and then they shared it with our first and second graders, including illustrations as well. But we've been doing things like that, bringing literacy into every single one of our subjects through, UPenn has been here for two years with the Penn Literacy Network, working with all of our teachers. As well, we are so proud of our community partnerships that we have with, where's Laura? With Laura, our, some of our kids go over and help stock the food pantry. We have local experts that have come in, we've really used our after-school programs, so that we have after-school programming about four days a week now. And any family that can't afford that after-school programming, we scholarship them in so that no kid is left behind, or they might need that additional care. So that includes things like having Idem &amp; Speckers play music, doing singing-songwriting with the kids. That includes, we have a soccer, soccer program this fall that was just a fun recreational program. We've had Lauren from Vermont Macrame as a fan favorite here, and I'm looking at one of my parents over there, whose daughters are added like every week. Then as well, we've had, recently, we have guitar lessons happening with Jake Geppert, many of you might know him from the Bonzo Boys. But as well, then we brought in experts like Kyle Usherwood from the Fish and Wildlife, as well as Arberus. And we're continuing our Hardests residence program and doing, working, and we're gonna have a performance at the Weston Theater Company this spring. So those are just a few things we're always doing. We do all the things that you do at every other school, with our maps testing, where our kids take the VT cap test, we do AMES web benchmarking, those are all things we do. I could tell you what's all day, but I think the more important part is why, why we exist. I think Kim articulated some of why we exist here, but beyond just educating our youngest students here, you know, we're really here, we're here for the families. When I look around, those of you that had your kids go here in the past, those of you that maybe have young kids that are hoping to have your kids come here in the future. And we actually have this year, as far as I know, the first legacy Mountain School at Wind Hall student, one of our kindergarteners' father went to school here and graduated from here. So it's really neat to kind of have our kind of first full circle in our 27-year history, and hope to continue to have that. And we're continuing to be part of the community. We've hosted not only town meeting in here, like right now, but we also had a memorial service here this year. We had a local community group, they had their fundraiser here this year, and we've even been in talks to have one of our other, a local businessperson have a, be able to run her camp out here for Kids for Charity Run. So, you know, we continue to offer an exceptional educational experience while fostering a love of learning with the kids. Our goal is they are lifelong learners. Any of you who are welcome to come here, and those that are parents, you may see, we have kids run into the building in the morning because they want to be at school. They literally run into the building, Vincent, who's here, a bus driver, he can verify this. We want the kids to be kind, kind to each other, kind to themselves, and kind to nature. So I just thank you for your continued support in this school, and I invite you, please, go throughout the school, and if you're really up for it, our third graders made this amazing board game, no joke. They developed their own board game, but it's all the way down at the end of the hallway in our art steam room. So before you leave, go check it out, go check out all the projects the kids have on the walls, and thank you so much for continuing to support the school.
I'm Holly Wedle, I'm the Assistant Head of School at Stratton-Ames School. Carson Thurber are our Head of School. The Stratton Town Meeting is at the same time, and due to us being in Stratton, and him being a resident of Stratton, he is at the Stratton Town Meeting. And wanted me to express to you how much he values this town and your support of our school. We really are grateful over the years for how much Wind Hall values what we do as a winter sports academy. And a lot has been said about the new proposed legislation. We want our parents in the community to know that we are really actively advocating for our winter sports athletes, so that they can continue to have this opportunity. About a third of our students come from the local community, and 32 of them are from Wind Hall. These are the kids that are training on your roads, that you're, they're probably interrupting your traffic, I'm sorry. They're amazing athletes, and they're more than just athletes. Our Head of School went to S M S, your Head of School here went to S M S. We're really proud of our alumni, and really proud of our traditional, our tradition of serving this community. So we are actively involved in advocating for students, not just for us, but for all the winter sports academies in Vermont. You know, next year's town meeting, we will have just completed at Winter Olympics in Milan, February of 2026. We project 12 athletes to be there. Over the years, we've put over 50 students on the Olympic stage. I think it's something that we can all be proud of, we all have a part in this. And to be honest, you know, there are three different proposed, there are, and then the three different things, the House, from the Governor, from Mr. Bondarts, only one of those carves out of space for winter sports academies like S M S. The other two don't see a clear path forward for us to continue to provide this opportunity. We're small, we won't meet the standards that some of the proposals are suggesting. And so I think it is really important, thank you, Kim Bowler, for taking the stage and speaking so eloquently on this, and the continued support of our school. I really do hope that next town meeting after the Olympics, we're celebrating these kids, and we're also celebrating continuing to give them the opportunity to attend schools like us, and Killington Mountain School, Burke Academy, Green Mountain Valley, all of us are in partnership, we work together, we all have slightly different missions, and together I think that we do a lot for making Vermont feel really proud, proud of our history of winter sports and outdoor sports, and keeping these kids really healthy and active. And I think, I know that whenever I watch them on the national stage, or even around here on the roads, I'm super proud of all of their efforts. So thank you to all of you at Wind Hall for being so supportive of choice, and hopefully we'll continue to serve the students.
Hello, everyone, I'm Dan Skolam, the Head of School at Maple Street School. This is my third year. Want to begin by again, just celebrating your eloquent remarks, Kim. I think you nailed it in terms of the lack of understanding about the benefits of choice. Also, I got a good chuckle when you said Heads of School and other politicians. I definitely feel like a politician the last couple of years, engaged in this process. I also would be remiss not to emphasize showing up, and it's something we talk about, I talk about a great deal at Maple Street School, to our students that one of the most important qualities in life is to show up, and I'd love to bring our kids up here to see this tangible example of showing up. For those that don't know much about Maple Street School, but I do see some former board members, parents, grandparents, current parents in this, in this audience, it's a special school. We educate a very big range. We started an early childhood program, so we have a pre-K program that's up at the Southern Heart Arts Center, for ages primarily four-years-olds and five-years-olds, all the way up to eighth grade. So a huge range. Our tier system kind of breaks down to early childhood, K through three, our intermediate grades, grades four and five, and then six through eight. We serve 146 students. 28 of those students are Wind Hall families, Wind Hall students, and we have other sending town families that break down to roughly 25%. So as Colin said, we are all about accessibility and affordability. One of our key fundraising efforts right now is for financial aid. We spread out financial aid to all families who need it, as long as they come knocking and demonstrate that need. So socioeconomic diversity, diversity in learners, diversity in families, diversity in geographic areas is very important to Maple Street School. Since I was up here last year, some of the new curriculum and program initiatives that are taking place in Maple Street, we have a dedicated outdoor program now, so our students are outside on our campus, and those who haven't been there, we're tucked up against the banks of the Batonville River behind Shaw's Grocery Store. So our kids are outside every day, whether it be engaged in scientific discovery, or just being outside in the elements, which is education in itself. We have a vibrant learning center, and we continue to invest in that, because special education is deeply important to Maple Street. We have a school counselor, and then three learning specialists. Some there are more focused on the upper schools, some they're more focused on lower school, that really support kids on IAs, 504s, or just honestly, school is hard, and it kind of depends on the year. We want kids who start to experience that hardship, and maybe where they question themselves as a learner, that we're there to support them and boost their self-esteem. The other exciting venture that we initiated this year was a specialist program. So we removed our fifth grade, which is a part of fourth grade, but kids now have the opportunity to take cinematography, rock band, we have an abstract art class, and we actually have a service learning class, so a dedicated space that you learn how to engage in the greater community. Not just fundraising, but actually tangibly engaging with a lot of the local NGOs and nonprofits, locally but also globally, how can you be a good community member and serve your community? So those are some of the new initiatives since I last was up here, but again, just want to end with reiterating the importance of really educating yourself about what's happening in Mount Pelear, and the importance of the choice system, because it really benefits a lot of schools, a lot of different schools, they take care of different types of kids from all walks of life. Thank you very much.
We're gonna get this a try. Can you actually hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good. If you can, I'm sorry, I'm whispering as loud as I can. I lost my voice six days ago. My family thinks it's really funny. I've got a couple things to say. One, Bruce, you asked about, well, how real the threat is. School choice exists in 4% of communities in Vermont, it represents 4% of students statewide, so you are definitely at risk when it's a statewide conversation. Our communities are 4%, operating communities are 96%, so we're vastly, vastly outnumbered. So the threat is real. I want to say a few things, whispered. Number one, I do personally believe that Vermont needs reform, that the statewide tax system has been skyrocketing, and 20 years from now, if we don't act now, 20 years from now, all of us may be living somewhere else because we simply can't afford it. So I think it's okay to be in favor of reform, but we want reform that makes sense for all of our communities. Burnburn has 800 students, we're far and away the oldest, and far, far and away the largest school in this area, and therefore we have the loudest political voice, and I want to tell you how we're using it. Number one, when we look at the proposals, the first and most important question is, is it good for all of you? Is it good for our communities? If yes, we're gonna support it. If no, we're gonna push again. Oftentimes I get asked about proposals that carve out Burnburn, and they say, "Well, Burnburn will be fine." And my answer is, we're partners with our community, and therefore we can't sell our community down with it. If it's not good for you, it's not good for us. So that's number one. Number two, all of these schools, all of our schools, including Burnburn, must maintain our independence, because that's what creates the creativity and the initiative that you hear as each of my colleagues talk about, new programs that they've created in their schools. It allows us to be entrepreneurial, and to think about your kids, and make all the important decisions in our schools for your kids. So number two, we want to maintain independence. And number three, we want fair and adequate funding. I don't expect us to get more than public schools. I don't expect us to get less than public schools. But we need to be able to keep doing what we're doing, so we can be the outstanding schools, and the outstanding choices that all of you deserve. Thank you for listening.
Okay, so, back to the pool spot. You're free to stay if you'd like, if not, I would you like to run? We were, Jen, do you want to fire up your?
Yes, Jen.
Do you want to do your?
Sure. Good to go. Yay, power. All right. Let me just kind of... ...other parts of the state, where the general theory is that choice really only privileges those who can afford it. In my experience, that is completely upside down here for the better. Choice here allows students who wouldn't otherwise be able to have that choice, to be able to go to exceptional schools. That was Matt's and my experience, where we had the benefit of choice, where, you know, we were given those tuition val... Of our kids to have that ability to access schools that they would not otherwise have that financial ability to be able to go to. So that's just my two cents. I'm gonna put my Wind Hall School Board hat back on, and just say thank you. I'm Jennifer Dec Samuelson, I'm the Chair of the Wind Hall School Board, joined by Dean Giannotti, and Meredith Dennis, and Sue Wilburn from the BRSU. Thank you, everyone, for coming this morning. If you can hear me, I'm not gonna stand up, because I really don't love that. And just want to also thank Margaret for opening up the school to us, allowing us to be here to get today and gather. I'm also Chair of the Wind Hall, or of the State Board of Education, and we have two student members who serve on that committee, and I'm gonna quote one of them, because a couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting, and he said, "No one ever picked democracy because it was efficient." Democracy is messy, but this is why we're here today. And we're gonna sit, we're gonna have a conversation, and I just, I realize that all of you are taking time out of your day, and I just want to say thank you, because it's really important that we're here, that we're able to talk about these things, and we're able to make decisions as a community. So thank you. Also want to thank Beth, and Al, and everyone who's here, and Lucia for supporting this meeting, so thank you. I have a couple housekeeping items. I was told to mention that in the town booklet, the Mountain School letter is on page 20. Somehow, there was a letter from a few years ago that was also included...
Whose phone's Danny? Not mine. Not mine, Scott, you know that. Not anymore. Jackie? Sorry.
That's okay. All right. Anyway, there's another, there's an old letter on page 35 that somehow got included in error, so just, you don't need to read that one, just read the one on page 20. The other thing is, are there any new Wind Hall resident voters with us today? Would you guys like to stand and just welcome? Would you guys like to stand and just welcome? Thank you for coming.
Unless your phone rings.
Or we go over noon. All right. So for those of you who've been here before, we do a slideshow every year just to kind of orient our conversation. So I'm going to burn through that and then we can take some question and answers and then I'll turn it back to Scott to do the reading of the articles and we'll vote on them. So with that, no further ado, I kind of start us off every, why is this not working? Uh oh.
Did you freeze?
Open it, open it on the, open it on the. Just, do you have the slide presentation open on your computer?
Oh, we got to go onto this, this thing right here. There, down. Sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you. Oh, here. Now we got to go down there and then if you just click right. There we go. There you go. Okay. So now can I use the arrow?
Oh, you should just, just keep clicking the button. Keep clicking your cursor. If you just click your cursor, it'll just keep going to the next one. So just push that down.
Okay. Thank you. Stay here. All right. So I just ground this. Meredith Dean and I have been doing this together, the three of us, for several years. And a few years ago, we spent some time at a series of meetings coming up with our mission statement. So this grounds the work that we do, which is to support each child's intellectual growth and academic success while encouraging creativity, independence, and responsibility to self and others. And I think you also heard that expressed with our heads of school today, that that really is, you know, they've, they've taken that mission and they've got different iterations of how that mission is accomplished, as well as our public schools. And I do want to recognize that we have many of our students who go to public schools. We didn't have any principals here with us today, but they also satisfy a really important niche because I think it's fair to say that not every school is the right place for every student, but there is a school that is the right place for every student. So just to kind of give a brief overview, this is our, we're looking at and voting on our FY '26 budget, which will cover fall of '25 to the spring of '26 next year. So our projected home stud tax rate is just about $1.84. Last year, you know, the year that we're currently finishing was, you know, just under a buck eighty. So the difference is a little bit under five cents increase on the tax rate. So for example, if you own a house that is worth $500,000, your tax rate is projected to increase by roughly $235. None of this is set in stone until the legislature adjourns, but we're kind of in that ballpark. The other thing, and I'm not going to go back, that projected tax rate of $1.84 point, or $1.84.5 is really about the same as where we were in FY '13. So we're, and you can see that it fluctuates every year, kind of goes up, kind of goes down. We are within that historic rate. And then the other thing I want you to keep in mind, tax rate is the same as in FY '13, more or less. In the meantime, this is tracking our population of students over that same period. So in 2013, we were educating 138 students. In 2024, we have 212 students, but our tax rate has been able to stay within that tax range. So again, lots of help from the BRSU. Meredith and Dean, we've worked really, really hard to stabilize the tax rate and allow for that growth while keeping the tax rate within an acceptable limit. So the budget for this coming year that we'll be voting on, we know of 187 students. So the BRSU kind of tracks the students and rolls them to the next year. And we roll off the graduating seniors, we put on, you know, the soon-to-be kindergartners. And then every year, what we encourage you guys to do is to allow for growth because we all know that families move in and they tend to move in in the summer after we passed our budget today. So we allow for 15 newly enrolled students. So the budget includes paying for 202 students from Win Hall. So the total tuition dollars is, you know, $4,138,114. And that includes remaining a BBA sending town. So we'll vote on that shortly, but that amount does include BBA. I will just tell you now, it doesn't include the mountain school because that is its own article, but Sue is going to be able to crunch the numbers really quickly if you guys approve that article and we will adjust this figure so that we're voting on the correct number. So Article Four, you heard from Margaret Schlatter, head of the mountain school. They are requesting $19,550 for their students that are grades K to six for next year. That is $290 above the state union average that they would otherwise get. That basically adds 3.3 cents to the tax rate. So as an example, if you own a $500,000 house, passing that article will increase your tax rate by about $15. And the total increase to the budget is just under $8,000. So we'll talk about that in a moment. Then the BBA sending town rate, which is Article Six, they are requesting $21,972. So that's just over $1,000 above the state union average that they would otherwise get. It adds about two cents to the tax rate and an owner of a $500,000 house would see their tax rate increase by $110 if this article is approved. And it increases the total proposed budget, which again, was included in that number by just over $51,000. If that article isn't passed and BBA gets the sending town rate, we would only be paying $20,760 for students who attend BBA and families would be responsible of making up the difference of just about $4,000 per child to attend school there. So in the past, we've had a discussion. The school board feels, and this is certainly something, you know, we're three people, we're part of the town. We have options for families to educate their children K to eight with no out-of-pocket expenses because they can go to any public school for no additional cost, they can go to the mountain school for no additional cost. This also provides families with the opportunity to send their kids to a high school with no additional funds out of pocket. And the school board felt that it's important to have families be able to do that. But again, that's a conversation for the town to have. We've kept it in there because it made sense to us. We have two additional tax stabilizing measures. These are very familiar to those of you who've been doing this for a few years. Article Seven allows us to transfer any unassigned general fund surplus at the end of the fiscal year to the tax stabilization fund. We actually don't anticipate that we'll have additional funds this year, so that's kind of there as a placeholder, but it would allow us to do that if we do end up with extra money. And that tax stabilization fund is really like our town's savings account. So for years, when there's a spike in the tax rate, because we have more kids show up and it really doesn't take a whole lot of extra kids to show up to throw our budget off, we have the tax stabilization fund, which has over $1 million, 1.3, something like that, that we can draw on to keep our tax rate from spiking. So we've set that up to allow us to put money in there in the years that we have extra money. We also have Article Eight, which is asking voters to approve putting an additional $30,000 into the bus reserve fund. Again, we kind of sock away a little bit every year so that when we need a bus, we have the money to afford it and it doesn't, again, spike our tax rate. So in conclusion, our final voted budget is 4.9% higher than last year, mostly due to increases in tuition rates and special education costs, but it's less than the state average forecasted increase. So we're expecting that our home stud tax rate will increase by 2.6%. The state average projected increase is 5.9%, so we're well below that. Well done. And with that, I will pause before turning it back to Scott and just see if there are questions that we can answer. Thank you.
Well, just so you know, the only questions you can ask if we are on Article Four would be about the mountain school's tuition rate. The other ones, she spoke about BBA and so on and so forth.
Sue have it modeled out for the increase on just the mountain school or the increase across all schools as well? Because that's something I'd like to ask.
Should we make the motion to pass Article Four?
Well, I think we want to move to discussion.
Yeah. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta let the moderator run the meeting. So first thing that I need to make, I need to make sure there are no questions, comments, anything else on Article Four before we move to vote. Yes.
I have a question that I'm wearing not my school board hat, but a regular kind of voting. Yes, felt thing. So I know Sue has run the numbers where it's the impact on increasing the tuition for just the mountain school is $15 per household. And I was curious what the impact would be if all the schools that are independent received the same allocation? Or is it just what our impact would be across?
Well, so first and foremost, in your article, you're only discussing the mountain school.
But I can move as a member for all the schools on the floor as I.
But as we discuss this, you're now asking us to take up, you're introducing a conversation about all the other independent schools, which would be its own separate article to discuss. Right now, we're just talking about the mountain school's tuition rate.
Right.
See what I'm saying? You're getting a little off. You're getting off topic of just the mountain school. You're asking about all the other independent schools, which is not what this article is about.
Right, but can I move to amend the article?
When we get to Article Nine, you can.
Okay. Because, but we have to pass article, this article before we move to Article Nine?
You will not be able to amend it because you need to, that needs to be its own article on the warning.
Okay.
You can't just start adding schools into your main articles or amend these other articles. So if that's something you want to do at next year's town meeting, my suggestion is is you get it on your warning.
Okay. I'd like to then talk about the mountain school as a, as a member. Okay. So I'm wearing not my school board hat, but just a regular voter hat. I am moderately concerned that independent, I am an advocate of school choice and I've been on the board for multiple years. I am concerned when independent schools cannot operate within a set budget. And I'm not talking about necessarily Burton Burton, which we've historically supported. But I am concerned if all the independent schools come back to Win Hall and say, hey, we need a little bit more, we need a little bit more, and this is as a concerned taxpayer. This particular article is for the mountain school, but there's nothing to say that all the independent schools don't come back and say, we're having financial issues, we want, you know, we need a little bit more money. I understand there's a historical precedent for Win Hall to support the mountain school. I also know that it's only 55% of the students currently attending the mountain school come from Win Hall. So I'm just wondering why the mountain school has asked the Win Hall taxpayers to shoulder this burden when the other, I'm not going to say the other independent schools haven't, but that's something I, that is concerning to me as a taxpayer, as somebody who's lived in the town for 11 or 12 years. I've seen the ugly side of what happens when our taxes go up and it is concerning to me.
The other part about that is, is that if the other independent schools feel they need more money, and I was on the school board for 17 years, they can certainly approach the school board to have an article put on here that they need more money. It's not like we make this decision ourselves. Any independent school can petition to have an article on the school district warning to ask for more money. So that's important to know that they had, it's not that they've been slighted, they haven't asked for anything.
I'm not sure they don't, I'm not sure they don't need it.
Well, they haven't asked for it, basically is what I'm saying. If they haven't asked for it, it's, it has to go on this warning. It has to be an article for you folks to vote on.
I thought that we could.
So I think what happens procedurally is you create your own article, and the mountain school did, and if anybody else wants to create it next year, they can as well.
I thought my understanding was we can add.
Absolutely. Hold on. Remember, if I don't recognize you, you don't have the vote. Cam.
Schools that have asked when they needed it.
Yes.
And we have had discussion and had a vote.
Yes.
And this year, we are voting on the articles before us based upon what the schools have asked for, based upon their current budget moving forward into the next year.
Correct. Anything else?
What? I think we can add.
Does the increase in dollar amount per student affect the amount sent to the state education fund different from those numbers? Does it change a multiplier on any of the increases? Because it used to be that whenever you increased a dollar spent, you spent, you sent 10 or 11 more dollars to the state fund. Is that a thing that's not shown on those numbers? Like, does it cost any more than $290?
So no.
As state fund?
No, I think what you might be referring to is when we're in penalty, where when you add money to the budget, it doubles itself because we're above the threshold, which we are not, and this will not put us above the threshold.
All right. When you had your slide up there that said, you know, this is what the school board, that we're, you know, 2.89, whatever it was, it's lower than what the state wants? Do those two get combined?
No.
So if the state passes a 4-point-something, that's what it is?
I think the state was projecting that most towns in Vermont will see their budgets increase by 5.9%.
It's this, it's the forecasted tax increase across the state's average. So it was just a forecasted average of how much taxes would go up.
So they don't get added together?
No, 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 no. I'm just saying that we're lower, like, and so.
We're lower than that forecast, yes.
Right, so we're contributing to a lower statewide average.
Stuart.
One thing that I don't think gets mentioned here that a lot of people don't know here, this is how much we have to raise educator kids. We have to send $10.4 million as of last year to the state education fund that doesn't really show up in this budget. So these figures are what we are raising to pay the children that are based in Win Hall. But we have to send $10.4 million raised through taxes to the state for the education fund. And it just so, because that doesn't really show up in the, in the scenario. And it's not your fault, it's the state's fault, but we're, we're talking on deaf ears up there. But just so that people know, we sent $10.4 as of last year.
Yeah, on that point, just for any of you new people, just so you know, the state of Vermont ends at Rutland. Seriously. We're nothing down here. Any other questions or comments on this? If not, we'll move to vote. I will read the article again. Shall the voters approve tuition payment of the announced tuition rate of the mountain school at Win Hall in the amount of $19,550 for the 2025-2026 school year for resident pupils who attend the mountain school at Win Hall? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes in fact do have it. Article Five.
And this is going to be amended? Like Sue will give you the number?
Right, right. Because she's going to be doing that. Article Five, shall voters of the school district approve, the school board to expand? And this number will be amended, as Jen said, because it's driven off on whether the previous article passed or failed. So I'm not even going to give you a number till Sue gives me a number.
The new number?
Yeah. $4,796,428?
Yes.
Okay. Shall voters of the school district approve the school board to expand $4,796,428, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? The Win Hall Town School District estimates that this proposed budget, if approved, will result, these numbers also change, Sue? Or no?
No, those are just estimated numbers.
Okay. Will result in per pupil education spending of fourteen thousand eighty-four dollars, which is eight point one zero percent higher than per pupil education spending for the current year. Can I have a motion to move the question to the floor? Kent Waller and Dave Squire seconded on discussion on Article 5. Everybody's wore out. No discussion, no questions, no comments, no anything? Speak now forever holds peace. I'm going to move the question to vote. Okay. Shall voters of the school district? Shall voters of the school district approve the school board to expand four million seven hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? The Win Hall Town School District estimates that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in per pupil education spending of fourteen thousand eighty-four dollars, which is eight point one zero percent higher than per pupil education spending for the current year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article 5 passes. Article 6, shall voters approve payment of the announced tuition rate of Burnburn Academy in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year for resident pupils in grades nine through twelve who attend Burnburn Academy? Can I have a motion to move the question to the floor? Beth Grant seconded, Matt Samuelson. Discussion? Yes, Robyn asks.
I have a question. Is this rate, is there a non-pocket for people who want to sign a PPA?
No, so that is the sending town rate that allows families to send their kids with no money out of pocket.
Thank you.
Anything else? Everybody's good? I'm not good, but of course not. I see no other hands in the room. I'm going to move the question to vote. Once again, Article 6, shall the voters approve payment of the announced tuition rate of Burnburn Academy? Shall the voters approve payment of the announced tuition rate of Burnburn Academy in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars for the twenty twenty-five, the twenty twenty-six school year for resident pupils in grades nine through twelve who attend Burnburn Academy? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the article passes. Article 7, shall the voters authorize the school board to transfer any unassigned general fund surplus existing on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in amount estimated to be forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars to the Tax Stabilization Reserve Fund? Can I have a motion to move the question to the floor? Kristy Boswell, folks, and Beth Grant seconded. Discussion on Article 7. Going once, going twice. We're moving the question to vote. The question, the article is, shall the voters authorize the school board to transfer any unassigned general fund surplus existing on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in amount estimated to be forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars to the Tax Stabilization Reserve Fund? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article 8, shall the voters appropriate the sum of thirty thousand for the bus reserve fund? Beth Grant makes a motion to bring it to the floor, Stuart Coleman seconded. Discussion?
Who's second, Jen?
Stuart Coleman. There, no, just, yeah.
Stuart Coleman, I just have a question. We are putting money in to buy a bus, but in the back of my brain, it's saying, we don't do buses anymore. Our buses now are in the greater...
We don't have the contract with the bus driver, it's through the BRSU, but we do supply the bus that is used to transport Win Hall students.
He manages and maintains it, we buy it, but he does everything about it. The district that we have joined?
Yes, you does it.
So we just give them a bus, brand new bus, and they service our vehicles.
So only transporting your kids, and any other kids that they might take on to transport are built for those services.
So regardless of whether we buy our own bus, or if we have to kick into a pool at the BRSU for a bus, you're going to pay for a bus.
And we get the benefit of any students that then pay to ride the bus.
Of course, yep, yep. That revenue's in, in, that's your, your budget, yes.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'm going to move the question, the article to vote. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of thirty thousand for the bus reserve fund? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes appear to have it. Passes. Article 9, to transact any other business which may legally come before the meeting. Do we have any other business? That legally come before the meeting, Teresa Amenden.
Teresa Amenden, so school board members, this is to you, I guess, do you technically extend an invitation from the other independent schools as to what their tuition's going to be, or would they like to submit a subsequent article and also to submit a, or from their other school in town?
So...
Was that too many? That, I know that was a little...
I was going to say, there was a few questions, I'll see if I get them all, and you can let me know if I've forgotten anything. We do not reach out to independent schools, they know where to find us, and, you know, obviously, they all knew to show up today.
Right.
So, my...
I'm just wondering.
Oh, 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 let Jen finish.
Well, you know, our thinking is that we are a neutral body, and so, like, I don't think it's necessarily appropriate for us to go fishing for, and that's just me, honestly, the school board has not had that conversation, but we have never reached out to any school to say, hey, you know, submit something to us. Anyone can sign a petition for anything, as you know. So, we receive the petitions, we ensure that they are legally binding, and if they are, then they go on warning. And then, the other question, I do know that it has been historic practice for heads of school to include...
So you do not solicit for that either?
No. The, what's, the reality of this is, is everybody in this game has been in this game a long time.
I understand that.
Including the heads of school, and it's really, it is not, that's, that's kind of asking when you want to bid on something to go and solicit. So they, they, as Jen said, they're your neutral line.
I'm just...
They're not going to stick out and ask for anything, they don't ask for anything from public schools, they don't ask for anything from private schools. The private schools, they all know, they just, they bring your stuff.
I'm, I'm just going to say this, this is just my opinion and from my experience on the school board, and I will just say this, I'm not suggesting that you have to do that or that you need to do that, I was just asking questions, okay? B, I'm just saying that the past history has suggested, if I were inclined as a practice school to do that, I may be hesitant. So that's why I asked the question.
Past history, but...
That's the only, that's the only reason I asked the question.
I agree with that, Teresa, past history would dictate that. I would say recent history, we've moved in a whole different direction, this board is extremely open to any and all correspondence to them.
I'm, I'm not suggesting they're not.
But I do understand the past, past...
No, I wasn't suggesting that they weren't, I just was asking about the practice of it, that's all. Thank you, Jen.
Yep. Can't we move, can't we move to amend? To add all the independent schools?
I have something to say.
Yeah, we can, cause it wasn't included.
I want to say...
I think we can.
I, I did also sit on this board for seventeen years, and I can tell you that what these folks do in front of you, it is a mind-numbing task, most days, and what they come up with, since this board has formed itself, has been stellar. I, I just got to say that, I mean, they're, they're, they're well put together, they do their data, they do their homework, it's, it's comprehensive, they watch the cost, and I think at the end of the day, we sometimes just need to acknowledge that we were elected basically volunteering for this, and it's important, I believe, for us to acknowledge that they have stepped to the plate, they are serving their time on this board, and at least give them the, the okay of, like, yeah, we really do appreciate the privilege.
Let me just say, thank you, and thank you. And I do really want to acknowledge the BRSU, because they're sort of the unsung heroes in all of this, and the support that they provide to us, and the guidance is really, we, we could not do what we're doing without them, so, thank you.
And, yes, I get paid for those comments, so if anybody wants one, we would, we would call you in. Anything else? Then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn until seven p.m. tonight with the polls. Suspend recess. Suspend recess, whatever. All grandparents. Have a motion? Beth seconded. Stuart Coleman. Stuart Coleman.
Here's a book. Here's a book. This is Willard Slade's.
Oh, I took that book and threw it back that way.
That was me. Thanks, Al.
Didn't know that.
Throw me over the box.
I got Willard Slade's book.
Wrong answer, boxing chairs. It's a lot difficult.
Where is it? One.
You ready? You have that? All right. We are now going to convene the Winall Town meeting. At 11:36, it's basically the same program that we just met through. I will read the articles. Go to the floor. Bogdan, Bob, your uncle. The first thing we're going to do, though, is that the town of Winall created a housing committee. And I have said that I would allow their chairperson to come up and say a few words. And I'd love to do that at the beginning of this versus the end. This town size is fairly short.
You gotta go to the mic. Go to the mic. Sher Bacon here.
Sher, the short.
Just a little lady that don't talk very well.
Hi, I'm Nancy Gates. I'm along with Sher and Molly. We chair the newly formed Winall Housing Committee. Our committee is made up of Winall residents who have been working on housing issues at the state, regional, and local level. We've just put together, we've had exactly one meeting, so we're just getting started. We've put together a mission statement that we're going to read to you guys, also be posted. We have a page on the winall.org town website. So our mission statement is this. The Winall Housing Committee's mission is to explore and support ideas to increase the amount of available housing for our growing communities. The DVC hopes to find inventive ways to create more options for housing for local workforce, young families, and our own seniors, so that people can comfortably work, live, and retire in our town and without raising increasing taxes on our residents. So we're looking to be very creative in how we find new ways and new places. We don't, we're different than other towns. And Sher will continue from there.
Hello, thank you. You may have heard that there was a four-town housing study that was conducted last year for our area by the Windham Regional Commission to bring Winall, London, Mary, Jamaica, and Weston together to discuss housing issues facing the area. The study found that our town in particular was in need of the most housing, at least 100 units over the next 10 years. Unlike other towns like Rattleboro, Bennington, we don't have old mills or other conversion opportunities. So we need to be creative in how we approach the problem. And we are just getting started, as Nancy said. Think about your own families and those you know who may need housing. If you might have a property that could be developed, or if you have any ideas you might want to share, please join one of our meetings. They are open to the public and will be held on the last Tuesday of each month. You can check the Winall website for our meeting times and our minutes. And feel free to join us by Zoom or in person at Town Hall. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think I probably don't need the mic, because... I take it it was kindergarten, I learned the word loquacious and quiet. So I don't think I need the mic. Just a few real quick things in this informational part of it. So if you've been on our new website, it's a new website. And thank you, Lissa, for a tremendous, incredible amount of effort and energy. My brain hurts thinking about what you put into it. It's not, I have to be fair, it's not as user-friendly as the last one was, where everything was right on the homepage and you could click right to directly to get to something. Now you sort of have to know what it is you're trying to get to. Like, if you want to get to the Housing Committee, you have to go down to Government Committees, get Housing, you know, and then in that, Subcommittee, Submenu to check, I mean, it, but it's... It's definitely up and running and good. And Lissa put a tremendous amount of time getting that together. The other thing there that is on the website also, yes, thank you, Lissa. It does have, and it does have a ton of more information than we've ever had up before. Minutes of meetings, minutes of House should be up, Housing Committee. Yes, I saw a draft of the meeting I attended. So all, you know, minutes are up if you want to look back through stuff. There's just a ton of information. The other thing is that on the website, you'll also see, I don't know how many are aware, but I know quite a few people here were aware, that we've been working, Marcel Gisquet, who passed, is on the cover of our town report and the inside cover. He was working ardently on short-term rentals ordinance for our town because we had a significant number of complaints from people, joining landowners mostly, things like garbage, or noise, or parking. So we finally, after he passed, we continued the process. And so there's a short-term rental ordinance up now. It became effective February 3rd or 5th. And it's up there. What we don't have right now, and we're open to, is anybody is interested in possibly being a short-term rental administrator. It's a part-time position, but it's 35 bucks an hour. It's 23 hours a week, which makes it part-time, so there's no benefits with it. But that's, you know, 840 bucks a week if somebody wants to take a decent position. That position, we haven't gotten response yet on that, as far as I know. It's been advertised and it's up on the website. The other thing is that we're working with the company that Marcel started with. It's called GovOS. Killington uses them. A number of other towns throughout the country use them to process this short-term rental applications. Lissa and I have been working with them directly every other Friday for a month or two now. And their go-live date is June 25th. Our drop-dead date on getting your short-term rental licensed, that's their go-live to allow for licensing. Our drop-dead date is August 31st. And after that, you're in violation. The, right, short-term rental, that's it. The ordinance is up there if people have questions about it. Bill@winall.org would be an answer. Or questions now, if people have questions. Sure, Robin.
Yeah, we'll take a couple of questions, but this is basically not question and answer on that. Robin, what did happen?
My question is, a short-term rental is less than 30 days. Are there exemptions?
No. It's less than 30 days, so it's more than 30...
What if you're renting less than 14 days a year? Do you still need to get a license?
It's in the ordinance. I think it specifically addressed that. The less than 14 is not a short-term rental. More than 30 is a, is a long-term rental. Right. The 14 days, yeah, it's in the ordinance. I believe it's right at the beginning of the explanation. Yeah, 14 days is, 14 days, federal and state is not a, is not a rental issue.
Just like to point out that I actually printed off the employment opportunity for the short-term rental administrator. If anybody's interested in reading about it outside, just right outside this door, we have all the paperwork, stand-up thing there, and it's in the very top right corner. So if anyone's interested, paperwork's right there.
Thanks, Al.
You're not getting a raise just because you...
Thanks, Al. And it is on the website, of course. The short-term rental administrator position is on the website. And the full ordinance, if you want to look at it. And there will be a mailing, the intent is to send out a mailing shortly. Like I said, GovOS isn't going live with the application processing until, they're saying, June 25th. So what we're, to get people to, give them a little more time, and in case people have questions, we're going to send a mailing to everybody, all landowners, to let them know that the ordinance is in place and that there's a list of what's required when you're registering a short-term rental property. And it's going to take some time to get that information in that the application requires. So to help facilitate that, there will be a letter going out shortly explaining all of that. So that people can start to get the, get their applications together, even though they can't submit it through the portal until, until the 25th, if it goes online, when it's supposed to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Article one. Select all town officers as required by law, which odds Australian ballot to back them. Article two. Shall the town approve the budget proposed by the Winall Select Board as presented as presented in the 2024 Town Meeting Board? Can I have a motion to move the question to the floor? Beth Grant, seconded, Dean Giannotti Jr. Discussion, discussion on the budget. You know what's going to happen? You know, I've been thinking about this as a town employee. So I've worked for the town for about 25 years or some such thing. I hold three different job titles, moderator, been on the school board. So every year when I stand here as your moderator and I ask you about the budget, next year what I'm going to do is I'm going to force them into giving me a $200,000 pay raise because nobody seems to mind.
I'm going to call you on the phone. I'm going to call you on the phone and send you to propose it.
Two cents on the tax rate.
Is there any, any questions or comments on the budget? I don't see any. I'm going to move the question to a vote. Shall the town approve the budget proposed by the Winall Select Board as presented in the 2024 Town Meeting Board? All those papers, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. The article passes. Article three. Shall the voters, and I know this is what you're waiting for, shall the voters authorize the creation of two additional seats on the select board for a total of five members pursuant to 17 DSA 2650B? The term of each new seat shall be two years. If this article passes, a special town meeting shall be held to fill the new seats. May I have a motion to move the question to the floor? Christie, about McKenzie, Godwell, or whichever way it goes. And second, Robin Hams. Discussion. Really all the hump dog over this. Okay, Teresa.
Teresa, I just wondered if there was, how you guys felt about it? This is left, or don't think how maybe you want to do. That's okay, I don't want to put anything...
I'm Stuart Coleman, for the people who don't know me. I, I don't know that I feel it's necessary. One of the reasons was, a lot of other towns are doing it. Just because they do doesn't mean we have to. Whatever, we'll work with it. If it gets voted, go for it. I don't, it's not, I don't know that it's going to streamline our operation any. But you folks are the ones who vote on it and make it happen. And we'll work with it, whichever way it goes.
So I'm Julie Isaacs, a member of the Select Board. I am for it. So I feel like with the size of a budget, we've got a $5 million nearly operating budget, which, as Stuart said, is only half of what we send. I mean, we send that much to the state. But I would like a deeper bench. My seat was filled because someone, I took the position, I had been going to the Select Board meetings for about a year. I took the position because someone died. I would like to see some more people of the community get involved. We're looking at some big projects, some really cool things. And I think that more people, more voices are beneficial.
Yeah, I might as well jump in too. So there were two reasons that were broached by Mike Cole, who put this petition in place to try to... The board voted against it, but there was, Mike raised the petition, so it's in front of the taxpayers now to decide what to do. And there were two reasons for it. One was succession, you know, as far as getting people that know what's going on to, you know, follow. And so the suggestion there had been to do what Julie did, which is Julie was at our meetings for almost a year, or more than a year. You know, if you really want to be involved, you know, and facilitate, you know, if something happens to me or Stuart or Julie, well...
Stop looking at the old guy.
It's okay. I'm catching up. So, so one thing was succession, which has never actually been a problem, ever. You know, there's people in our community right now that have been, Beth has been for about three years, that every Select Board meeting that we're at, she would qualify as a select person easily. And most people seem to know her, I think. Scott, who has served on many boards over the years, would qualify as a select person like that. If the need came up, he would join in. So I don't think succession...
I mean, he's been a select man before.
Alex as well, Alex Vilka, has been at our Select Board meetings and has been coming. My suggestion to Mike when he did this was, if you have people that are interested in being... being at the select board meetings, have them come. That's what's going on now. We have people that come to our meetings. They want to be involved, they want to know what's going on. He said, "Well, you don't have a vote." No, you don't have a vote, but you have a voice. We never shut anybody out. The first part of the meeting is public comment, and then throughout the meeting, anybody can talk. We're not even moderate, we don't even moderate like Scott does. I mean, no, we just, you know-
Sometimes we have to shut you down.
Shut me up, but that's the loquacious when I was in kindergarten. I learned that word. So, you know, so one thing was succession, and the other thing was that, yes, that there are other boards around us that have five members, except for Peru that has three. Bennington, a bigger town than us, has three.
Actually, there's a list that you can look at from the state, if you all did any homework on this.
I did, actually.
And it prints off every town, their voter registration population, and how many select members are on their board. You typically don't see five-member boards until you get up into much higher registered voters.
Registered voters. I actually did print out both those lists, the registered voters list and the, and went through it, and the select board list that showed it town by town, the number of voters in each town that are registered, and the number of select board members in each board. It varies. There's two-hundred-and-forty-seven towns in Vermont. You're gonna get different things in different places for different reasons. I don't see a reason, as Stuart said, I don't say because other towns are doing this around us or did it years ago. I mean, Stratton did it probably fifty years ago. Stratton made their board five people.
Thank you.
You know.
Okay. Jan had her hand up first, and then this young lady.
So, I believe my feeling, I say, but do you guys say A?
Yes. Weekly, with an A. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, we do.
No, it's in here.
I can't read it.
Okay.
You didn't want to borrow my glasses?
Yes, we do get paid, so there would be additional payment, adding to people with additional pay. I think, what, the chair gets about six, and we get about five on an annual basis.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it comes weekly. If you want a position, take the short-term rental administrator position.
Sorry, Mike Cole had his hand up before you. I noticed.
I'll try to step forward. So, my name's Mike Cole. I'd like to, first, before we talk about the article, I think all of us as members of the town should recognize and appreciate our existing select board. They have done a tremendous job. They give vast amounts of time, energy, and talent to the tasks that they do. All of us as town members owe a debt of gratitude to them. So, before we even talk about an article, let's just recognize and appreciate the work of the town.
Thank you, Mike. I did have something else that I forgot to mention, which is that-
Oh, bitch, admit it. You gotta talk to Scott.
Well, it was fine. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Bill. And thank you, I appreciate it. So, the thing, I guess I would like to briefly mention is kind of that, there was the question that was, the point that Stuart raised very well. We all do benefit greatly because these three board members put so much of their time and talent and energy into it. I think all of us that know the three of them know that they are just steadfast. Please keep in mind, for all of us that remember it, or for those few of us who might not have been here at the time, that the last time one of those chairs became open was in 2018, when Dave Clavock passed away during his turmoil office. Julie was appointed to fill that seat. Thankfully, she quickly came up to speed and has done a wonderful job for the town since then. Stuart and Bill are fantastic. Unfortunately, neither of them are aquamortal. I mean, we would wish that they would be. We would all benefit that they do.
I thought it was-
But the idea that this plan offers to us is to set up a multi-generational succession plan. These fourth and fifth seats that get brought in under Vermont statute can either be one-year term or a two-year term. This article is calling for them to be two-year terms. Their seats, those existing three seats, are three-year term seats staggered expiration. The article before you is for two-year term seats. They would also be staggered expiration based on the way the statute is written. The reason that this is beneficial to the town is to bring in new people into the select board so that they can be developed over time under the tutelage of our very experienced, very talented, very knowledgeable, lots of institutional history in those three individuals, so that ten years from now, twenty years from now, there are people ready to fill those three seniors.
You're gonna have to fill them for then, trust me.
There's a vast amount of institutional knowledge that just doesn't spring out of the ground with anyone else who walks into those seats. The select board is the, basically, the firewall that all of us as town people turn to first when there's a dog barking at us. My street's not getting flat. They are the frontline defense. They take the heat. A newbie coming in will have time to be able to come into that, how do I do this? How do I think it would-
Hey, excuse me. I can hear it murmuring back there. Neither one of you have the floor. Mike Cole has the floor, so I'd appreciate it if you stop talking. Thank you.
I'll stop and not go into other arguments supporting this. I feel that this is the one most important point. There are other points in favor of this. I'll leave that for other people who might wish to speak to it, to bring them up in the conversation today. But again, I want to say, we owe a debt of gratitude to our three select board members. They have served us very well, but it is time for Win Hall to prepare itself for ten years and twenty years from now with equally senior, equally capable leaders who can fill those seats. Okay, thank you.
This young lady right here's had her hand up for a while, so please, I'll stand up and state your name for us.
I'm Janet Spelinski, and Mike answered part of my question, but I just wanted to get a little more information about the statute that was referenced here, like what it calls for. Does it recommend five board members? So-
Good luck.
I can address that. So, I'm not an attorney, but I can read, and so, I'll let any of us that are reading today who are attorneys correct me because of my not being. What I've read of the statute is that it says that select boards in the state of Vermont can either be three-member select boards, or they can be five-member select boards. The default is three-member select boards, and that's just the state why it had a default. Many towns have voted to amend that. We can talk about the numbers. I have a little bit different numbers, but I'm not gonna pursue that part of it. Answering your question.
Talking experientially. Talking experientially. Talking experientially. Talking experientially. They're not just purely talking about board experience, which is something you do have to learn. They're not just purely talking about board experience, which is something you do have to learn. They're not just purely talking about board experience, which is something you do have to learn. They're not just purely talking about board experience, which is something you do have to learn. You don't just walk in, you have to know how boards work. You don't just walk in, you have to know how boards work. You don't just walk in, you have to know how boards work. You don't just walk in, you have to know how boards work. So I am one of those boys that would be very happy to help this town. So I am one of those boys that would be very happy to help this town. So I am one of those boys that would be very happy to help this town. So I am one of those boys that would be very happy to help this town. I believe in serving your community. 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 I've done it for over 25 years. 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 I'd like to do it further here in Wind Hall. I'd like to do it further here in Wind Hall. I'd like to do it further here in Wind Hall. I'd like to do it further here in Wind Hall. I think the five-person party is not going to slow down the board. I think the five-person party is not going to slow down the board. I think the five-person party is not going to slow down the board. I think the five-person party is not going to slow down the board. I think it's going to bring new blood and new voices to the board for a growing town in Wind Hall. I think it's going to bring new blood and new voices to the board for a growing town in Wind Hall. I think it's going to bring new blood and new voices to the board for a growing town in Wind Hall. I think it's going to bring new blood and new voices to the board for a growing town in Wind Hall.
Oh, Bob, I'm going to try to get through these speakers. Oh, Bob, I'm going to try to get through these speakers. Oh, Bob, I'm going to try to get through these speakers. Oh, Bob, I'm going to try to get through these speakers.
It's his wife, his wife can applaud. It's his wife, his wife can applaud. It's his wife, his wife can applaud. It's his wife, his wife can applaud.
Travis Dobson. Travis Dobson. Travis Dobson. Travis Dobson.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Scott. I just have a question, and maybe you guys can clarify this for me. I just have a question, and maybe you guys can clarify this for me. I just have a question, and maybe you guys can clarify this for me. I just have a question, and maybe you guys can clarify this for me. You know, just the particular examples that, you know, Scott, you're incredibly qualified. You know, just the particular examples that, you know, Scott, you're incredibly qualified, Jeff, you're incredibly qualified. You know, just the particular examples that, you know, Scott, you're incredibly qualified, Jeff, you're incredibly qualified. You know, just the particular examples that, you know, Scott, you're incredibly qualified, Jeff, you're incredibly qualified. Jeff, you're incredibly qualified. But if you guys step into those roles tomorrow, are there mechanisms in place for conflicts of interest? But if you guys stepped into those roles tomorrow, are there mechanisms in place for conflicts of interest? But if you guys stepped into those roles tomorrow, are there mechanisms in place for conflicts of interest? But if you guys stepped into those roles tomorrow, are there mechanisms in place for conflicts of interest?
Yeah, the state has a, like Beth could easily be a select person and the town clerk. Yeah, the state has a, like Beth could easily be a select person and the town clerk. Yeah, the state has a, like Beth could easily be a select person and the town clerk. Yeah, the state has a, like Beth could easily be a select person and the town clerk. She wouldn't give up her position. She wouldn't give up her position. She wouldn't give up her position. She wouldn't give up her position.
Okay. 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 Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Are you required to recuse yourself from certain votes? Are you required to recuse yourself from certain votes? Are you required to recuse yourself from certain votes? Are you required to recuse yourself from certain votes? Okay, so a three-person board then would essentially become a one-person in certain situations. Okay, so a three-person board then would essentially become a one-person in certain situations. Okay, so a three-person board then would essentially become a one-person in certain situations. Okay, so a three-person board then would essentially become a one-person in certain situations. Because you guys, you're valuable, you're so valuable to us. Because you guys, you're valuable, you're so valuable to us, we would hope that you wouldn't resign. Because you guys, you're valuable, you're so valuable to us, we would hope that you wouldn't resign. Because you guys, you're valuable, you're so valuable to us, we would hope that you wouldn't resign. We would hope that you wouldn't resign.
Don't lie about that. Don't lie about that. Don't lie about that. Don't lie about that.
You know, if you don't resign from your position. You know, if you don't resign from your position. You know, if you don't resign from your position. You know, if you don't resign from your position.
They don't have to resign. They don't have to resign. They don't have to resign. They don't have to resign.
To the mechanism. To the mechanism. To the mechanism. To the mechanism.
They don't have to resign. They don't have to resign. They don't have to resign. They don't have to resign.
So there's no mechanism. So there's no mechanism. So there's no mechanism. So there's no mechanism.
They just have to be voted in, just like Jeff was talking about trying to maybe, if this were it, get voted in. They just have to be voted in, just like Jeff was talking about trying to maybe, if this were it, get voted in. They just have to be voted in, just like Jeff was talking about trying to maybe, if this were it, get voted in. They just have to be voted in, just like Jeff was talking about trying to maybe, if this were it, get voted in. It's not a lock because he has some experience and none in our town or very little. It's not a lock because he has some experience and none in our town or very little. It's not a lock because he has some experience and none in our town or very little. It's not a lock because he has some experience and none in our town or very little. But there's people that have had. But there's people that have had. But there's people that have had. But there's people that have had.
Three years. Three years. Three years. Three years.
On the planning commission, yes, I did too, actually before. On the planning commission, yes, I did too, actually before. On the planning commission, yes, I did too, actually before. On the planning commission, yes, I did too, actually before.
We don't need the, I'm not going to have. We don't need the, I'm not going to have. We don't need the, I'm not going to have. We don't need the, I'm not going to have.
I'm just saying, as far as elected positions, yes, I'm trying to answer Travis's question, yes. I'm just saying, as far as elected positions, yes, I'm trying to answer Travis's question, yes. I'm just saying, as far as elected positions, yes, I'm trying to answer Travis's question, yes. I'm just saying, as far as elected positions, yes, I'm trying to answer Travis's question, yes.
Do you have to recuse yourself from? Do you have to recuse yourself from? Do you have to recuse yourself from? Do you have to recuse yourself from?
Well, we all have to do that on any board, anytime there's a conflict, yes. Well, we all have to do that on any board, anytime there's a conflict, yes. Well, we all have to do that on any board, anytime there's a conflict, yes. Well, we all have to do that on any board, anytime there's a conflict, yes.
Sure, okay. Sure, okay. Sure, okay. Sure, okay.
Yep. 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 Yep.
But, okay, so the point is then if it creates a smaller board versus if we had mine, in theory. But, okay, so the point is then if it creates a smaller board versus if we had mine, in theory. But, okay, so the point is then if it creates a smaller board versus if we had mine, in theory. But, okay, so the point is then if it creates a smaller board versus if we had mine, in theory.
Uh, yeah, uh, yes, so. Uh, yeah, uh, yes, so. Uh, yeah, uh, yes, so. Uh, yeah, uh, yes, so.
Scott. 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 Scott.
Yeah, I got. Yeah, I got. Yeah, I got. Yeah, I got.
Okay, I was just going to try to answer some of the conflicts. Okay, I was just going to try to answer some of the conflicts. Okay, I was just going to try to answer some of the conflicts. Okay, I was just going to try to answer some of the conflicts.
Oh, I'd like to get everybody else's hand. 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 Sir, you had your hand up. Sir, you had your hand up. Sir, you had your hand up. Sir, you had your hand up.
Me?
Me?
Me? Me?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Oh, thank you, Scott.
Oh, thank you, Scott. Oh, thank you, Scott. Oh, thank you, Scott.
My name's Tim Cress.
My name's Tim Cress. My name's Tim Cress. My name's Tim Cress.
I've, some great points were made, and I understand, listening, I think the motivation here, and I think it's good.
I've, some great points were made, and I understand, listening, I think the motivation here, and I think it's good. I've, some great points were made, and I understand, listening, I think the motivation here, and I think it's good. I've, some great points were made, and I understand, listening, I think the motivation here, and I think it's good.
But there are risks to doing this.
But there are risks to doing this. But there are risks to doing this. But there are risks to doing this. I came from, when I moved here three and a half years ago, from a much larger community in Massachusetts
I came from, when I moved here three and a half years ago, from a much larger community in Massachusetts with a big select board.
I came from, when I moved here three and a half years ago, from a much larger community in Massachusetts I came from, when I moved here three and a half years ago, from a much larger community in Massachusetts with a big select board, very political. with a big select board, very political. with a big select board, very political.
Very political. Three people have to get along.
Three people have to get along. Three people have to get along. Three people have to get along.
Five, you have the risk of factions and politics.
Five, you have the risk of factions and politics. Five, you have the risk of factions and politics. Five, you have the risk of factions and politics. The other thing, and I'll be very brief, the other thing is, it's a lot, you know, we've got three really good people here right now.
The other thing, and I'll be very brief, the other thing is, it's a lot, you know, we've got three really good people here right now.
The other thing, and I'll be very brief, the other thing is, it's a lot, you know, we've got three really good people here right now. The other thing, and I'll be very brief, the other thing is, it's a lot, you know, we've got three really good people here right now.
But maybe we won't have as good people here in the future.
But maybe we won't have as good people here in the future. But maybe we won't have as good people here in the future. But maybe we won't have as good people here in the future.
It's easier to keep an eye on three people than five.
It's easier to keep an eye on three people than five. It's easier to keep an eye on three people than five. It's easier to keep an eye on three people than five.
That's my point.
That's my point. That's my point. That's my point.
Good, Bobby. Good, Bobby. Good, Bobby. Good, Bobby.
Hi, my name's Bob Montoro.
Hi, my name's Bob Montoro.
Hi, my name's Bob Montoro.
Hi, my name's Bob Montoro. So I kind of echo that.
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 I, I was torn.
I, I was torn.
I, I was torn.
I, I was torn.
People have been asking me about this, and I didn't know much about it.
People have been asking me about this, and I didn't know much about it.
People have been asking me about this, and I didn't know much about it.
People have been asking me about this, and I didn't know much about it.
In the last week, I own a store here, I own Window Market, I have nine other restaurants.
In the last week, I own a store here, I own Window Market, I have nine other restaurants.
In the last week, I own a store here, I own Window Market, I have nine other restaurants.
In the last week, I own a store here, I own Window Market, I have nine other restaurants.
And I own properties in other towns.
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 And we have a five, we switched in one of the towns to a five-person board, and it has caused a rift.
And we have a five, we switched in one of the towns to a five-person board, and it has caused a rift.
And we have a five, we switched in one of the towns to a five-person board, and it has caused a rift.
And we have a five, we switched in one of the towns to a five-person board, and it has caused a rift.
And a, it slowed things down.
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 And five people that have liked each other for as many years as I know have gone all back to their corner.
And five people that have liked each other for as many years as I know have gone all back to their corner.
And five people that have liked each other for as many years as I know have gone all back to their corner.
And five people that have liked each other for as many years as I know have gone all back to their corner.
And I listened to it at my shops around the area, and people were talking about this before I came in.
And I listened to it at my shops around the area, and people were talking about this before I came in.
And I listened to it at my shops around the area, and people were talking about this before I came in.
And I listened to it at my shops around the area, and people were talking about this before I came in.
And some of the answers were given.
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 Has made me even more torn on the way I'm going to vote.
Has made me even more torn on the way I'm going to vote.
Has made me even more torn on the way I'm going to vote.
Has made me even more torn on the way I'm going to vote.
But what I noticed over in one of my other towns where you have a property was two of the members aren't talking to the other three.
But what I noticed over in one of my other towns where you have a property was two of the members aren't talking to the other three.
But what I noticed over in one of my other towns where you have a property was two of the members aren't talking to the other three.
But what I noticed over in one of my other towns where you have a property was two of the members aren't talking to the other three.
Three haven't been here before, and it's completely slowing down some of the processes.
Three haven't been here before, and it's completely slowing down some of the processes.
Three haven't been here before, and it's completely slowing down some of the processes.
Three haven't been here before, and it's completely slowing down some of the processes.
And then friends that were friends aren't friends anymore.
And then friends that were friends aren't friends anymore.
And then friends that were friends aren't friends anymore.
And then friends that were friends aren't friends anymore.
And that's the part that I worry about.
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 And the other part was a question was, other than succession, is there another reason?
And the other part was a question was, other than succession, is there another reason?
And the other part was a question was, other than succession, is there another reason?
And the other part was a question was, other than succession, is there another reason?
I mean, five, I mean, somebody answered that, and I lost it.
I mean, five, I mean, somebody answered that, and I lost it.
I mean, five, I mean, somebody answered that, and I lost it.
I mean, five, I mean, somebody answered that, and I lost it.
But I can't wrap my head around why we need five, other than if somebody were to move on.
But I can't wrap my head around why we need five, other than if somebody were to move on.
But I can't wrap my head around why we need five, other than if somebody were to move on.
But I can't wrap my head around why we need five, other than if somebody were to move on.
That's all I.
That's all I.
That's all I.
That's all I.
So that question, because he is looking for an answer. So that question, because he is looking for an answer. So that question, because he is looking for an answer. So that question, because he is looking for an answer.
Keeps looking at me. Keeps looking at me. Keeps looking at me. Keeps looking at me.
Mike, because this is his baby. Like, because this is his baby. Mike, because this is his baby. Mike, because this is his baby.
So are there any others who will have other questions to this question as well? So are there any others who will have other questions to this question as well? So are there any others who will have other questions to this question as well? So there may be others who will have other questions to this question as well, but I'll offer two others. 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 One was that Bill mentioned was that it's illegal to be law so that, the topic was about them talking about town business. One was that Bill mentioned was that it's illegal to be law so that, the topic was about them talking about town business. One was that Bill mentioned was that it's illegal to be law so that, the topic was about them talking about town business. One was that Bill mentioned was that it's illegal to be law so that, the topic was about them talking about town business. I'm going to change that specifically to two members being able to learn about complex technical issues I'm going to change that specifically to two members being able to learn about complex technical issues I'm going to change that specifically to two members being able to learn about complex technical issues I'm going to change that specifically to two members being able to learn about complex technical issues that are in the town's pipeline of planning and in the, that future, not soon thereafter, pipeline of expenditures. that are in the town's pipeline of planning and in the, that future, not soon thereafter, pipeline of expenditures. that are in the town's pipeline of planning and in the, that future, not soon thereafter, pipeline of expenditures. that are in the town's pipeline of planning and in the, that future, not soon thereafter, pipeline of expenditures. The town specifically has foreseeable upcoming large multimillion-dollar expenses that are being discussed presently. The town specifically has foreseeable upcoming large multimillion-dollar expenses that are being discussed presently. The town specifically has foreseeable upcoming large multimillion-dollar expenses that are being discussed presently. The town specifically has foreseeable upcoming large multimillion-dollar expenses that are being discussed presently. And they're going to be planned at engineering scales for a new fire station, police station combined. And they're going to be planned at engineering scales for a new fire station, police station combined. And they're going to be planned at engineering scales for a new fire station, police station combined. And they're going to be planned at engineering scales for a new fire station, police station combined. Fluviel system is what they consider, and a lot of complexity about that, not trivial. Fluviel system is what they consider, and a lot of complexity about that, not trivial. Fluviel system is what they consider, and a lot of complexity about that, not trivial. Fluviel system is what they consider, and a lot of complexity about that, not trivial. None of us are landscape architects or have the skills with civil engineering. None of us are landscape architects or have the skills with civil engineering. None of us are landscape architects or have the skills with civil engineering. None of us are landscape architects or have the skills with civil engineering. There's going to be a lot to be learned there. There's going to be a lot to be learned there. There's going to be a lot to be learned there. There's going to be a lot to be learned there. The second major project of the town is going to have to be considering, it would be so these two members could learn from one another The second major project of the town is going to have to be considering, it would be so these two members could learn from one another The second major project of the town is going to have to be considering, it would be so these two members could learn from one another The second major project of the town is going to have to be considering, it would be so these two members could learn from one another through asking questions of experts. 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 I, and perhaps many of you, learn by hearing the questions asked and learning with my other classmates. I, and perhaps many of you, learn by hearing the questions asked and learning with my other classmates. I, and perhaps many of you, learn by hearing the questions asked and learning with my other classmates. I, and perhaps many of you, learn by hearing the questions asked and learning with my other classmates. So there's the opportunity to have a more educated, informed awareness of a multitude of engineering issues So there's the opportunity to have a more educated, informed awareness of a multitude of engineering issues So there's the opportunity to have a more educated, informed awareness of a multitude of engineering issues So there's the opportunity to have a more educated, informed awareness of a multitude of engineering issues that are going to go into a wastewater plan for the village district and a fire station, police station that are going to go into a wastewater plan for the village district and a fire station, police station that are going to go into a wastewater plan for the village district and a fire station, police station that are going to go into a wastewater plan for the village district and a fire station, police station in a fluvial zone along the Wind Hall River. in a fluvial zone along the Wind Hall River. in a fluvial zone along the Wind Hall River. in a fluvial zone along the Wind Hall River. Those are complicated issues that will need a lot of discovery and a lot of discussion with experts. Those are complicated issues that will need a lot of discovery and a lot of discussion with experts. Those are complicated issues that will need a lot of discovery and a lot of discussion with experts. Those are complicated issues that will need a lot of discovery and a lot of discussion with experts. So that's the second. So that's the second. So that's the second. So that's the second. The third issue I would say that I've heard mentioned is that our three board members, as wonderful as they are, The third issue I would say that I've heard mentioned is that our three board members, as wonderful as they are, The third issue I would say that I've heard mentioned is that our three board members, as wonderful as they are, The third issue I would say that I've heard mentioned is that our three board members, as wonderful as they are, do not represent in the following way the majority of Wind Hall voters. do not represent in the following way the majority of Wind Hall voters. do not represent in the following way the majority of Wind Hall voters. do not represent in the following way the majority of Wind Hall voters. When I got the numbers of dates of registration of every one of Wind Hall's 830 voters, When I got the numbers of dates of registration of every one of Wind Hall's 830 voters, When I got the numbers of dates of registration of every one of Wind Hall's 830 voters, When I got the numbers of dates of registration of every one of Wind Hall's 830 voters, what I found in that data was that 63% of all of our towns registered Wind Hall voters, what I found in that data was that 63% of all of our towns' registered Wind Hall voters, what I found in that data was that 63% of all of our towns' registered Wind Hall voters, what I found in that data was that 63% of all of our towns' registered Wind Hall voters, registered within the last 10 years. 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 Now, of our three board members, became registered voters in the town of Wind Hall within the last 10 years. Now, of our three board members, became registered voters in the town of Wind Hall within the last 10 years. Now, of our three board members, became registered voters in the town of Wind Hall within the last 10 years. Now, of our three board members, became registered voters in the town of Wind Hall within the last 10 years. My point here is that there is not a continuing stream of new talent, welcoming new members, welcoming new citizens, My point here is that there is not a continuing stream of new talent, welcoming new members, welcoming new citizens, My point here is that there is not a continuing stream of new talent, welcoming new members, welcoming new citizens, My point here is that there is not a continuing stream of new talent, welcoming new members, welcoming new citizens, ultimately recruiting them, leaders recruiting leaders. 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 If that same goes, managers recruit their replacements. As that saying goes, managers recruit their replacements. As that saying goes, managers recruit their replacements. As that saying goes, managers recruit their replacements. Good managers are always recruiting to recruit their replacements. Good managers are always recruiting to recruit their replacements. Good managers are always recruiting to recruit their replacements. Good managers are always recruiting to recruit their replacements. Bill's point that it's not our job to train our replacements, I would actually say it is your job as a good town leader Bill's point that it's not our job to train our replacements, I would actually say it is your job as a good town leader Bill's point that it's not our job to train our replacements, I would actually say it is your job as a good town leader Bill's point that it's not our job to train our replacements, I would actually say it is your job as a good town leader to be recruiting and training when it's going to be your replacement. to be recruiting and training when it's going to be your replacement. to be recruiting and training when it's going to be your replacement. to be recruiting and training when it's going to be your replacement. You won't live forever. You won't live forever. You won't live forever. You won't live forever. You'd like to, but you just won't. You'd like to, but you just won't. You'd like to, but you just won't. You'd like to, but you just won't.
Can you answer the question? Can you answer the question? Can you answer the question? Can you answer the question?
So that was directed to me, so I'd like to respond. So that was directed to me, so I'd like to respond. So that was directed to me, so I'd like to respond. So that was directed to me, so I'd like to respond.
That's what I'm saying, you're kind of rolling on here. That's what I'm saying, you're kind of rolling on here. That's what I'm saying, you're kind of rolling on here. That's what I'm saying, you're kind of rolling on here. You've answered a question, and a lot of people, not to cut you off, but ready for the questions. You've answered a question, and a lot of people, not to cut you off, but ready for the questions. You've answered a question, and a lot of people, not to cut you off, but ready for the questions. You've answered a question, and a lot of people, not to cut you off, but ready for the questions. I got other people ahead of you. 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 Hannah. 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 Hannah.
Hannah Gianotti, I'm on the planning commission here and also on the newly formed Board of Housing Committee.
Hannah Gianotti, I'm on the planning commission here and also on the newly formed Board of Housing Committee.
Hannah Gianotti, I'm on the planning commission here and also on the newly formed Board of Housing Committee.
Hannah Gianotti, I'm on the planning commission here and also on the newly formed Board of Housing Committee.
I happen to be under the impression that a five-person select board would serve this town very well.
I happen to be under the impression that a five-person select board would serve this town very well.
I happen to be under the impression that a five-person select board would serve this town very well.
I happen to be under the impression that a five-person select board would serve this town very well.
You know, for the reasons that Julie had already mentioned.
You know, for the reasons that Julie had already mentioned.
You know, for the reasons that Julie had already mentioned.
You know, for the reasons that Julie had already mentioned. Some point that's been.
Some point that's been.
Some point that's been.
Some point that's been.
Other end of that is that two people can steamroll if you have a three-person select board.
Other end of that is that two people can steamroll if you have a three-person select board.
Other end of that is that two people can steamroll if you have a three-person select board.
Other end of that is that two people can steamroll if you have a three-person select board.
And so there's, there can be instances where there's actually not a lot of.
And so there's, there can be instances where there's actually not a lot of.
And so there's, there can be instances where there's actually not a lot of.
We don't have anyone that is involved in all of those different boards. But there is a state published list that tells who can be in what position in the town. If that answers your question.
Hi, I'm Janet Hurley, also a member of the Housings Committee. And I just, I just think it's about broadening perspective and giving people opportunity to be involved. I, I think that there aren't any inherent problems with five people not getting along as opposed to three people getting along. I really think it's about perspectives, broadening them, and giving more people a voice in affecting how their town moves forward.
You had your hand up.
Mark Malley, I sit on the board here at the Mountain School and also on numerous corporate boards as well. And diversity, not only from the point of view, but from the experience that you bring to the table is something that every board I've ever sat on looks for. It makes the board move more efficiently. If you need legal advice in the future, you look to have a lawyer on your board. If you need design advice, you look to have an architect on your board in the future. And by having an increased number of board members, we will increase the amount of diversity that we have.
Okay. I'm gonna do something that I'm allowed to do. I'm gonna step down as moderator, and I'm gonna give you my thoughts on this. I'm not popular, so I admire someone, but as- ...moderator, fifteen, something like that? I watch every single year us have elections for one select board member. Unopposed, unopposed, unopposed. I sit in every board meeting since I became the supervisor, because that's a requirement. Who's usually in there? Who's in there for the last few years? Three selectmen, myself, Trevor Dryden, Beth. Now, all of a sudden, everybody believes that we need to jump up and increase our board size. And maybe we do, I'm not saying we don't. But don't do it on this premise of, oh, get involved, get involved. Because my thing is, and I've done a lot of stuff in this town, still do a lot of stuff in this town, volunteer a humongous amount of time. If you wanna be involved, you get involved. You shouldn't need an invitation. You should be putting your name on that, you put out your petition, get your name and get on these things. And now, all of a sudden, because, and I'm gonna say it straight up, I don't care. We, I don't like the fact that, like, it's kind of made this like national politics in this small town. Democrats need more representation. I don't like that at all. I don't like it one bit. I don't think that has any play in small-town government check. It's the people that are here that you put in front of everybody. And I don't like this whole idea of, like, all of a sudden that, well, we need these people to get involved. Well, why should we go out there and beat your doors to get involved? If you were part of the Wind Hall town and the Wind Hall community, you should be getting involved yourselves. You know the process. You know that we vote one selectman out every year. You know it. You know all you have to do is ask Beth what do you have to do to run against that person. It, I don't care which way you vote. You want five people, great. Because whoever comes on, you're gonna have to be my boss. Good luck.
I can vote for that.
Just do this under the right premise. I've heard this thing, you know, opportunities, blah, blah, blah. You shouldn't have to spoon-feed people community involvement. If they wanna be involved, be involved. If you want five selectmen, have five selectmen, but be honest why you want it. That's all. I mean, I've been listening to this crap since it all started, all the back words. You know, I am the supervisor to transfer station. Everybody comes in here, wants to talk to me, wants to talk to me, wants to talk to me. I know a lot of the underbelly political stuff that goes on that has never brought up in here, because it's all kumbaya. Just be honest about why you want something. I have no issue with a five-person select board, because I'll steamroll over them like I do the current board.
Any other questions? Sorry, I haven't recognized you. Any other questions?
So, Alex Belka, Assistant Town Clerk, Assistant Treasurer. I think that, and this, I'm echoing something here, that a five-member board does present the danger of two people talking behind closed doors when they should. I'm a big fan of Vermont's open meeting law, where every meeting is worn, everything that is said by the select board, by two members, three members, you are all invited to see, it is recorded, everything is known. We go to five, two people can be talking, and no one will know about it. No one will know what is said. And I think that's dangerous. I would also like to say that, again, if you wanna get involved, just show up. All three of them are very open to listening to opinions when you show up and say something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
I just wanna also say, it's true, if you wanna get involved, it's so easy to get involved. You just show up. I was on the school board for seven years. And when I got on the school board, I wanted to be there, so I went and listened, and I ran. And I got on there. And the thing that we did do was, we talked about a lot of different things going on. We did have committees, and we did pull in people onto those committees who would be helpful in moving forward. So, I think it goes to what Scott was saying. If you wanna do something, get involved. And if you wanna increase the board ultimately at some point, then you do it for the right reasons. But start showing up. Anybody is welcome.
Thank you, Kristi. Larry?
I was unavoidably delayed, so my only question is, has any evidence been put forth that the three-member board is somehow detrimental to our town? Is there, has there had there been problems because we have a three-member board versus a five-member board?
I think there's been comments on both sides for it to go. I don't see any, and we'll work with it, whatever. Let's just move on. I think everyone knows how they're gonna vote right now. I'm gonna turn it back over to Scott, but I think everybody knows how they're gonna vote, let's move on.
Okay, thank you. I'll do the question. Vote, just a sec. Can I have one more for Julie, has something to say, and then Larry?
I'm sorry, didn't recognize you.
Did you have your hand up before, Tim?
No.
Well, I thought you had that before, and I was just ignoring you.
No, never have.
All right. So, Tim, you've not spoken yet.
No, I have not.
I am gonna allow Tim to speak, and Julie, and then that's it. Larry has called the question.
To announce, I just wanted to propose that we go to paper ballot.
Okay, let's, so, all right, so, anybody can request a paper ballot. I need six more people.
There you go.
There you go.
Oh, shit, we got Athens page. So, once Julie has her say, then... Sorry, my brain is completely off-reading. Oh! Then, Beth has asked me, is it anybody that's elderly or whatever? It's because you're gonna go to the back of the room, go through to vote. You're gonna get a scrap of paper, you go, yes or no, very simple. But anybody that's elderly or had any issues, moving, walking, whatever, if they could go first, and then everybody else form a line. Beth asked me that. Yes, Tim?
Just when people come through and go, what's that? Just stop with Robin and tell her what your name is, just so she doesn't have to ask.
Scott.
Be prepared, she knows most everybody, but it will actually-
Can you clarify, a yes vote is to make-
Yeah, I'll do that after I get to Julie's final comment.
Okay, sorry, just want everybody to know.
I just wanna say that this town is amazing. We've had this discussion, no one's been yelling at each other, no one's been arguing. It makes me proud, it's why I fought so hard to live here.
You're welcome for having such a miserable, strong-ass moderator here that that shit- Okay, so, that's it, we're moving this question. We have beat this horse rein into the ground. What I am going to do is I am going to reread the article, because I do, as moderator, need everybody to understand how you vote, what it will be. Article three, shall voters authorize a creation of two additional seats on the select board for a total of five members pursuant to seventeen BSA 2650B. The term of each new seat shall be two years. If this article passes, a special town meeting shall be held to fill the new seats. If you vote yes, then you'll have a five-man board.
If it passes.
If you vote no-
If it passes.
Well, that's the yes.
If it passes, but your yes vote is four.
Oh, I see, right.
A five-man vote.
Let's be clear.
Your no vote is to keep the three you have. Period. Yes or no? You'll go to the back, form a line. As I said, anybody elderly or has a little issue-
I guess I'm gonna get back here, aren't I?
Moving. Vote first, that is from Beth's request, because it is a little tight. Rest of you form a line over there. You'll give your name, vote, and come out. Barnes? Just while they're at, so what's gonna happen is, is that they're going there and they're gonna count the votes, the JP's Justice of Peace. They'll win, count the votes, they'll get a tally, they'll come out, Beth will come out, come up, tell me what it is. I'll probably stand here for forty-five minutes, just to keep me in anticipation. Then I'll announce, you know, how the vote went, whether it passed or failed or whatever. Then the last order of business is the same as the school district to conduct any other business that comes before the board. Regardless of that, I've done this moderator thing for quite a while, and I would reiterate what Julie said. I do like a spirited debate, I do like both sides of the point, and I do appreciate that everybody that was here for these topics we discussed, you all were very well mannered, which is important. I think you can have a difference of opinion, as long as, you know, you treat the other person with respect. Your opinion's their opinion. It's kinda, it's kinda like a honeycomb, where do I get out one? So I've been told. Dave?
Have you ever seen it where there's a point where you got a little new pitch, just like that?
Yep. Before I took over, we had the old town moderator, literally, they had a fight on the floor, where they were going at it so bad, that the moderator just completely lost control, the whole meeting. And it was just pandemonium. It was insane. And the thing of it is, is, you know, what, you know, with the town meeting, I mean, this is the town and the school districts' annual business meeting. This is where we come to conduct that business. But the other thing is, and I do, I probably do give more leeway than most moderators when I let people talk, because I also feel this is your one time of the year that you can come out and vent about whatever you wanna vent about. Yes, I will close down people that have already talked a million times and others that haven't, because that is what I'm supposed to do. But if you wanted to stand up and vent, and you thought there were too many goes in there, Al, I'd let you.
Just a little piece of paper.
Okay, so on Article three. Shall voters authorize a creation of two additional seats on the select board for a total of five members pursuant to seventeen BSA 2650B. The term of each new seat shall be two years. If this article passes, we have a count of yes, forty-two, no, twenty-seven. Article three, that passes, within...
Sixty days.
Sixty days. Within sixty days, we'll have a special meeting to elect the two extra seat members.
Scott, you might wanna clarify that they have to petition.
Yes.
I mean, that's how you elect someone.
Right, right, but that's also, they can go to seat back or not.
Sure.
Article four, does your end act any of the business that may legally come before the meeting?
Make the motion, we suspend.
Recess? Oh, your bride has her hand.
I just want to thank condition of choice, I really want to give a shout-out to our police EMT and fire departments for all the work they do for all the people.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got this comment on a couple of different occasions, and it usually makes most people cringe, but with our police department, they can save your life, and they can kill the guy that shot you. Inevitable. You don't get that just anywhere. And the fire department as well, their, their, their volume of calls has increased, and they've stepped up adverbly to take care of it. So, you know, these are, the volunteer fire departments, it's a good look for guys, again, taking time out of their lives to serve us. Is there any, pardon?
I just have a question about the special town meeting. Barbara Coleman, I have a question about the special town meeting. Will we be here like this, and having those people that put their name in the pot, so if we don't know them, we can know what they represent?
Yeah, Beth, you have to make sure, you're the election official.
Or is it just an Australian ballot? Will we see the name, and we find out about Duncan?
So, it will be an Australian ballot. Our town always votes Australian ballot for elected officials. It will be at the town hall, it will be ten to seven, on the chosen date of the vote.
We have to send it.
Warned as a normal meeting. Certainly, you could, I mean, you could, whoever decides to run, then you could ask them questions, but they will have to fill out their, their form, their consent form, with one percent of the voters, right now we're at eight hundred and sixteen, as of today.
So, they have to have nine, nine votes, nine signatures of qualified voters into town?
I always say get more, because some people sign it that aren't voters.
Aren't voters.
You know, they say they are real voters, so.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify-
Yep, no, absolutely, good question, Barbara. Beth is your election official, so any, any election questions, Beth will field. Sir, yes, sir?
Yeah, Armand Gartagnan, I just joined the energy committee, just mentioned earlier, the advisory group to the select board. We're looking for ideas and volunteers, just had a good first in-person meeting last night, and so, reach out to, I guess, who would it be?
Michael.
Michael is the regional former of this, there, if you're interested in participating. We're looking at environmental and energy issues for the town.
Okay, Beth?
So, there is a select board meeting tomorrow night, I would just suggest anybody who is interested in these two positions, now's your time to start attending.
Is there anything else?
Dog licensing?
There are, you want all of that?
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear that. I don't know, Scott, I've been licensing here, so.
You were valid.
Theo was licensed. Theo was licensed, I saw her.
I know.
Is there any, anything else? Any other, okay, I'll take a motion to suspend.
Recession.
Matt Beck, second, Hannah-
I did not hear who made it.
Matt Beck. Motion, seconded by Hannah Shinani. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll reopen at seven PM.
He was there when Joanne went, got it-